Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The Smithtown Planning Board is now in session.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We thank you. Please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. The first item on the agenda, the Planning Department recommends the following items for adjournment as we have insufficient information to act upon them. Part two, item six, number 2010-06, KVC Holdings. Part three, item eight, number 1053A, Berg Estates. Item nine, number 911A, Glen Hill Northern. Part four, item 10, number TC 11-01, T-Mobile Northeast. Part five, item 11, 288 application of Olivia Estates. Item 12, number 926, Countryside. Mr. Chairman, these are the items the Planning Department recommends for adjournment this evening.
Is there anybody here to be heard on those items to be adjourned? No objection, motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the items read.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So ordered.
Mr. Chairman, the next item on the agenda under part one, number 1127.1, Catherine Estates. Mr. Chairman, this application was brought before the board at the March 2nd, 2011 Planning Board meeting. At that time, the applicant's counsel requested an adjournment so that he could come back before the board and respond to the memorandum that was presented to the board. Additionally, the applicant also submitted his statement regarding the five area variance criteria, which I believe that everyone was given a copy of. And this evening, you will be hearing comments from the applicant's attorney, and of course, you can pass the resolution when he's finished if you wish.
Anybody representing the applicant?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Vincent Tramarko. I represent the applicant. I have the affidavit of posting. As I recall, you also adjourned this matter for an onsite inspection, and I believe that a few of the members of the board visited the site. Just a couple of things that I would like to bring out. As Mr. Donadio indicated, I did submit to you and the members of the board the five variance criteria. I'm not going to bore you tonight with the reading of them, but you do have it in your file, and we believe that pursuant to that criteria, we conform to the map request of Catherine Estates, which is basically one house and then another house to the rear. One of the things that I noticed after thinking about this a lot and the fact that there is a cemetery adjacent to the property, where we do adhere to the proposed plan that the Planning Department has espoused, you would have not only two houses right next to each other with very little distance between the houses themselves, but more importantly, very little distance between the house and the cemetery. And that cemetery, according to my investigation, has been around, I think, the late 1800s it was established, so it's certainly been there quite a long time. And the proposal that we have, I think, is better suited for the character of the area. It makes more sense to do the proposal that we have from the street. It will look like one house with a rather expansive front yard. And if you do the other, if you agree with the Planning Department, you're going to find houses squished together with really no sense of it at all, since it doesn't conform to the character of the area, and that's what it's all about, character of the area. So, given these criteria, given the fact that we did present our criteria to you, and I certainly think we conform to that criteria, the best use of this land, if it's to be subdivided, is the proposal that Catherine Estates espoused, which is, I guess, before the board now, and that's the map that you're looking at. So we asked the board for its favorable consideration. Again, I know some of the board members visited the site. If they have any questions of me or any of the board members, and also, the applicant is here tonight, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, what we're going to do tonight is, we're going to act on this letter and the proposal. Now, Frank, does this proposal that you presented to us tonight, is that the same as this map? Well, there's a little difference in what your heading is. You put a heading there of 1127.1, and his letter refers to 1127. Is that substantially the same thing?
Well, what happens is, .1 means that it's a modified application.
Okay.
And the original application that we gave a number to was the one with the side-by-side. So what the board is acting on is 1127.1. I mean, okay?
Thank you. What I've done there is I've left the board is going to maybe ask a series of questions, and I'll start it off. The layout for this lot with the residence in the back, when we were talking about having access to be able to get in with emergency vehicles, one of the things that was given to us is that there would be no obstruction that would prevent there an emergency vehicle from seeing a residence in the back. Are you aware of that?
No, I'm not, Mr. Chairman.
Well, I went to the, what happened was, at one of the meetings, I went to one of the commissioners and asked him about having there a clear, what did he need for public safety, fire, ambulance, or whatever, to be able there to identify a residence in the back that was not clear from the street? And one of the things he said was that it was an ample driveway, roughly 50 feet, and that there was no obstruction there to see the residence in the back. So the garage that's proposed on this plan that we've got, if your client can remove that garage and reconsider it someplace else, that that would fit those requirements there, that the fire department there and the emergency safety people wanted to be able to have.
Well, I'd have to ask my client, of course.
Okay.
I have actually, I have a question about the garage while you're on the topic. Under the, under the plan as it exists, on the proposed plan as it exists now, there's a garage there on the property. That garage is going to be taken down and moved back to where the proposed house is? Is that the plan?
The garage, the garage is going to be moved on that plan.
Can I give you a name?
Dan Hickey. To the east.
Would you identify yourself, please?
I am Dan Hickey and one of the co-applicants. The garage that is currently there at the end of the existing driveway is going to be moved to the east so that the new driveway to the new house will prevent a straight line from the road to that house.
So the garage that's existing there now is going to be moved towards the back of the lot?
No, toward the east of the lot, would be the side.
Towards the cemetery side?
No.
Or the other way?
Away from the cemetery.
Well, it looks like that the garage is, it looks like the garage in this map is in the proposed residence footprint. Is that correct?
How far east?
Is that correct?
It's being moved approximately 22 feet. The entire width of the garage is being moved over one entire width to the east. The garage is approx, it's 22.4 feet. So on the map.
Well, it's in the footprint, though, of the house layout. Is that the garage that's there now?
That's, the garage there now, that's the garage that's there now. Even though it's drawn in yellow, so it looks like it's part of the other house, it's not. It's part of the existing house.
Oh, this garage is up here now?
Yeah. The fact that it's yellow just shows that it's being moved, there's a square there where it's not colored in, and then it's being moved closer to the existing house and further away from the cemetery. The driveway coming into the street provides a direct line from the street to the garage on the proposed house, so that house will be visible from the road.
So just so we can be clear, where it says garage in the footprint of the residence, correct?
Yes.
That's where the existing garage is now?
Yes, and where it says proposed.
And where it says proposed garage relocation, that's where it's going to be?
That's where it's being moved for, so there will be a clear, straight driveway from the road to the proposed residence.
Can that, can you, would it be acceptable for you to move that further to the east?
Sure, another five feet or whatever?
Okay. Basically, that's the point there that I wanted to get through, and the reason that I want to get through it was because, to explain there to the people here tonight, when this application there first came into us, what happened was there was a lot of discussion on it. And so, I had lived in the area for quite a while, and in fact, my children, when they were growing up, we wouldn't allow them to come down Maple Avenue because of the fact that there was no sidewalk on my side of the street. So they found a way to get to the Miller's Pond, and one of the ways that they did it was going by the cemetery. And so, when I asked them what it was, they said that they didn't know what it was. But occasionally, the lady that lived a couple of doors away, Mrs. Buckeye, used to chastise her for going through the cemetery. And so, as I finally got into more and more study of the application, there was a lot of historic information on this cemetery that we'd never known before, that this cemetery was started in 1890 as a potash field and has been used periodically all the way up until the time that the codes for the state said that they, you could, you didn't have to have a potash field, per se. So my concern is to make sure that the privacy of that cemetery, with whatever you do, is on it. I feel historically, and I feel aesthetically, that it should be protected. And so, whatever the rest of the board wants to do, my concern was, only with this garage was, that it might obstruct there the house in the back in the event there was emergency vehicles wanted, had to have access into the property, okay?
Yeah. I don't believe that it does, but if the board wishes.
Where it is now, when it's right in front of the.
Yeah, it's right in front of the house. So that if it could go sideways, or you could work it out to go sideways in the final, when you're all done with the plan, they would be fine by me.
When you say sideways, you mean more towards the existing house?
Yes, yes, more towards the other house.
I just want to say, the reason I raised that question is, having been out there, from my view, and again, I'm just looking at what I saw versus what's on the plan, where the garage is now, looks like, from looking at it, is where it says proposed garage relocation.
No, no, it is not. The garage.
I know, you're telling me it's not, but from going there, it looks, in real life, much closer to the house than it's shown on this drawing.
Because, it gives that appearance because the current driveway comes in on an angle of the street, and the property is not an exact rectangle. It's kind of a trapezoidal, you know, type of property, so it gives that appearance, but it's not. You know, we could move it another five feet, it would be clearly out of the way of the house behind it, so that, you know, the entire side of the house would be exposed to the road.
Okay, any other questions by the board?
I have a question of Mr. Derubias. Two questions, actually. There's been some comments about another proposed side-by-side, I think Mr. Tramarko indicated, that the Planning Department would rather have the house, the new house, next to the existing house. So is it correct that the position of the Planning Department is not that it's being subdivided, but you think it would, in your opinion, be better if the house is put next to the existing house as opposed to in the back?
Yes, that's correct.
And the other question I have is, I think we discussed this at the last meeting, there's a sentence in the memo, talks about the town board in 1972 restricting the creation of flag lots, that's the term that's used, allowing this design only if it was preferred for some public purpose, e.g., creating a public street to serve only one or two homes would not be economical for the municipality. I thought we concluded at the last hearing that there was no requirement that the, this type of lot had to be done if it was for a public purpose. I thought that was a mistake.
Not exactly. What we did agree was to eliminate that phrase because it implied that that was the only standard. What is really, is that the town board eliminated that standard and substituted a five-part standard into the regulations, one of which was a public purpose. But it, the way the question was asked was, was it, did it have to only be a public purpose? And the answer is no.
Well, one of the guidelines that was given to the board concerning subdivisions included four, five, or six items there to be considered, and one of them was part 4C. It says, "The change would preserve historically significant structures or features of the town," with no definition, it just says self-explanatory. And that's what I feel is important for this application, that we've got a historical cemetery right next there to your application. It's got a lot of history that was documented a couple of years ago by the Smithtown News in a feature article and in an editorial about the importance of maintaining the historical character of the cemetery. And for that reason, that's the reason I wanted to consider this application, and I think it's an important one.
I helped with that preservation, and I provided hoses and water for some of the other kids that were working in that cemetery to get it cleaned up, John.
Well, I hope that whatever happens, that that's considered as part there of a responsibility there for your application to make sure that that historical perspective there for that cemetery is maintained.
Absolutely. That's why I put the largest side yard on the side with the cemetery, and that side yard is heavily wooded and will remain that way.
Now, I have one more question for you, because maybe you can help us with it. In the back of that lot is an entrance that apparently comes from Columbus Avenue. Am I correct? I saw people walking through, like my kids probably did the other day, walking through the cemetery. They came from Columbus Avenue, they walked through, and then were going down Darling. Now, is that part of, is there a right of way in behind this, it should be?
On the far side of the cemetery, the western side in the rear, there is a gate, and there's, I guess there's an access way. It's almost about a sidewalk width, but it's a dirt path that goes from the cemetery to Columbus, and that's what the access is from the other side. I believe that's public property.
Okay, so I think we probably have to contact the town, because the town owns the cemetery property and the maintenance of the property. So whatever we decide to do here, we'll use that in mind when we, when we proceed with the application, okay? Any other questions?
I just want to follow up on that point. I don't want to beat at that horse, and maybe it's too late for that, but just on that public purpose issue, Mr. Derubias, the public purpose is one of the several objectives, has to just meet one or more of those objectives where it's listed 4A through G? So it's not that it has to meet the public purpose? Public purpose is one of the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 objectives that it can meet? All right, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
I have a question.
Yes.
The garage is going to be then relocated. It's going to be moved over about five feet, correct?
Five feet more from where it is now, so to give a clear, unobstructed view from the road. I believe that's what Mr. G is concerned about.
Right, so that'll be in the recommendation, in the resolution, that will be.
Well, I think that as this goes forward, I mean, this is just the preliminary map there, or the final map there, but it doesn't, it can't, doesn't say that you can't move that some other place there before you actually start there, the layout there, the building and so forth.
If you put that condition into the resolution, I will certainly abide by it.
Yeah, we can just add it on, just verbally add it on. We can do that?
All right.
Right, that's, everybody agrees?
Everybody agrees?
Yeah.
How do we identify the location?
What?
How do you identify the specific location that you want the garage?
Well, I guess there, you know, this is just a map, so how would you identify where you want to put that garage or it won't be an obstruction?
I mean, I don't know that this is exact, but I would say I would move it five feet due east and away from the cemetery.
And additional five feet.
An additional five feet from what's shown, that's correct.
Right, not from where it currently is, but what's from shown on the plan.
Where it's shown is, it's called proposed garage. It's in yellow, it'll be moved five feet to the east from that point.
Could we also just put in there, just that it, the driveway is going to provide clear, uninhibited access, no visual impairment?
It'll be a direct line to the street, there'll be no impairment.
Fine. All right.
All right. So let's get, if there's no other questions by the board, we'll have the variances or the Environmental Quality Review Act first for Catherine Estates. A motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to be heard, please. With all due respect, I'd like to be heard as well.
We heard you, sir. We heard you, we heard you twice already, sir. No, this is a hearing, just, we have a letter before us, and this was requested of us at the last meeting, and that's what we're acting on tonight, this letter.
Mr. Chairman, please give me one second, please. With all due respect, it's the board's responsibility, not Mr. Tramarko's responsibility, to provide documentation, evidence, and I'm quoting, it is the board's responsibility to consider all the possible detrimental impacts to the community and provide a record of evidence. I should have to hear that. Where is the record of evidence?
Listen, we have already had all of this information there before us. It's in the application.
Mr. Chairman, the board is responsible to provide a record of evidence to support their decision, one way or the other.
Well, it's in the, it's in the minutes of the meeting here.
And the last hearing.
All we have is Mr. Tramarko's analysis, which quite frankly, doesn't concern me.
It's in the meeting, though, that's what I asked Mr. Derubias there. I said, "Do these minutes that we have here tonight, do they correspond to the plan?" He said, "Yes."
Mr. Tramarko's analysis is his analysis, as far as.
Would you, would you come up here to the microphone, please, sir, and identify yourself?
Sure.
Because we've heard you now two or three times, and we want to resolve this tonight.
I understand.
Wait, before he, before he speaks, Mr. Derubias, this matter was the matter, was the subject of a public hearing previously, correct?
Yes.
When was that, March, February?
March 2nd.
March 2nd.
March 2nd.
Yes, I understand.
No, if you have anything to give to people, you give it to the.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Planning director, okay? And then he'll, he'll handle all of that.
I apologize.
All right. Yes, my name's Tom Polifka. I reside at 54 Darling Avenue in Smithtown. And once again, I appreciate the opportunity to address the board this evening, but once again, there were some new additional items that need to be addressed this evening that were not addressed.
But give us five minutes, do you see how, what a crowd we have in there?
No, I understand.
Five minutes I'm going to give you.
Okay, I understand. I'll get to the heart of the matter.
Okay.
Okay, the heart of the matter is that, in my opinion, Mr. Tramarko has failed to adequately demonstrate, among other things, that an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties created by granting of the area variance. Section 267B3 clearly states, and I'm quoting, "The legislative change is also specifically allowed zoning boards or appeal to take into account any negative impact on nearby properties. It is the board's responsibility," I quote, "the board's responsibility to consider all of the possible detrimental impacts to the community and provide a record of evidence, which I've yet to seen, to substantiate any of these impacts that they determine are significant in their decision to grant or deny area variances. Unless I have mistaken, I have yet to see any record of evidence submitted by the Planning Board as required by Section 267B3. The only thing I've seen is Mr. Tramarko's analysis. With all due respect, my wife and I are not interested in Mr. Tramarko's opinion, but rather the planning, in the Planning Board's legal obligation to provide a record of evidence as required under Section 267B3. His analysis is irrelevant. That said, is the Planning Board going to use Mr. Tramarko's analysis as their own in determining whether or not to grant this area variances? In other words, in approving this application, or is the Planning Board going to present their own record of evidence? In my opinion, it would be unconscionable for the Planning Board to take Mr. Tramarko's analysis and present that as their own record of evidence. That would be like having a jury determine the guilt or innocence of a defendant based solely on the defense attorney's presentation while completely ignoring the prosecution's case. Did you really expect Mr. Tramarko to submit an analysis that was not favorable to his client?
Okay, listen, thank you very much. First of all, what you're referring to is a board of zoning appeals. This is not the board of zoning appeals. This is the Planning Board.
I understand.
We have a subdivision before us, period. We've acted there, we've heard you two or three times on your opinions about what you think about this application, but we have a right to act on that application, and we've considered the two options.
I understand that.
Okay, so we don't have anything to do with the zoning board of appeals. If you want to go to the zoning board of appeals and file in a complaint, that's what you can do.
Okay.
But not tonight.
Section 267, we discussed it the last meeting, sir. We discussed all these items over here.
Well, you might have discussed it, but it doesn't have anything to do with us.
We discussed it at the last meeting. We don't, we need to discuss it again?
No, we don't.
It doesn't have anything to do with us, it's the zoning board of appeals.
So you're not taking into consideration any public, any public comment as you told me you would?
I did, I gave you two hours the other night, you and your wife.
So the negative impact on my property and my property values doesn't concern you?
Oh, listen, that we don't get into. We have an application before us. It's a subdivision application. We've considered both options there to be able there to process this application, and tonight, we're going to act on that, on those, on those processes.
So what you're saying is that the memo that was sent to Mr. Tramarko, asking him to do an analysis, what was the purpose of that if you're telling me now that that's meaningless?
No, no.
That was a requirement of the application.
And why was it, why was it required?
No, sir, anything there that you disagree with us with, there's a place for you to go, but we have a decision to make tonight.
I understand, but why was Mr. Tramarko asked to submit an analysis if you're now telling me that has nothing to do with what you're talking about tonight?
Because there, it's a zoning board. It's not there, the Planning Board. If you have an, if you have agreements with what the zoning application is, you should go with the zoning board, not to here.
Well, I respectfully disagree with that.
What?
I said.
That's okay.
Like I said, why was your attorney, or why did your, as I understand, I could be wrong, you can correct me if I'm mistaken, but my understanding is that your attorney asked Mr. Tramarko to submit this analysis, and now you're telling me this is meaningless?
No, I said there that whatever you, whatever you are sectioning your quoting from has got to do with the zoning board of appeals, not with us.
Well, then why was Mr. Tramarko asked to do an analysis?
I don't know, you'll have to find out from him. Let counsel there answer the question there.
We were talking, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
I mean, could someone answer that for me? Why that was, why that was, why Mr. Tramarko was asked to do an analysis of those five items, which I think he did a poor job of? Why was it, why was he asked to do that if now you're telling me this is totally irrelevant?
Nobody said it was irrelevant.
It's not required of the application.
It's not required of the application.
That's what I said to you there, it's got to do with the zoning.
And why, and why was?
What you're referring to, sir, in that section, is the zoning board of appeals.
As I understand it, correct me if I'm wrong, the only reason this is even in the record is because I brought it to the board's attention.
But the fact of the matter is that we don't handle that here. We don't handle anything there for the zoning board of appeals here.
So why was Mr. Tramarko asked to do an analysis?
I don't know why. You'll have to find out.
Well, can I ask the attorney? Well, can I ask the attorney?
Here it is, this is what's required, right here. The board must meet.
Was there a question posed to me?
Well, my question was, why, why, my, I'm sorry.
The gentleman wants to know, apparently there's.
There was the letter that was written by Mr. Tramarko, the gentleman wants to know why he was asked to provide that information, is that what your question is?
Yeah, why was he asked to do an analysis of something now the board is, the chairman is telling me is irrelevant to this proceeding?
Well, no one said, I don't think anyone said it was irrelevant.
It's not irrelevant.
There was information that was.
I'm sorry, you said.
Required as part of the application, is that correct?
The applicant is required to offer his, his responses to whether, in fact, the criteria to grant or not grant the variances, right?
Or met.
Is met. It has nothing to do with this board takes that under consideration, but it also has to make its own determination based upon this individual board member's analysis of whether, in fact, the variance requirements were.
Based upon all the other information that we have, including all the information that we took at the last public hearing in March.
I asked Mr. Tramarko to present that letter.
Okay, my, my question is, where's the, where's the board's.
You've got an answer from counsel.
No, I understand, but where's the board's.
No, it's got, the answer's been given to you, and you don't want to accept it, I can't help that.
It's not a question of accepting it, what I'm asking is, where's the board's evidence?
Listen, you heard the counsel just say to you that it's not relevant.
No, that's not what he said.
That, basically what he said, is that correct, counsel?
It's one of the items the board has to consider, along with the rest of the record in Catherine Estates.
The evidence is in the record of the proceeding, as made at the last public hearing, as indicated in the documents that are part of the memo, as indicated as whatever part of this colloquy is here today, that's the record, that's the evidence.
Where is it, I don't, I don't recall seeing any evidence or record to address those five items in Section 267b3.
No, listen, sir, all you're doing is asking questions there as an attorney, I'm not an attorney.
No, no, no.
And you're not an attorney. If you wanted to go someplace with this question of what we're going to do, there's a place for you to go, there's attorneys plenty, attorneys available, and you can do that. But we're going to act on this application tonight.
I understand that.
Okay.
The gentleman over here, I'm sorry, I don't know your name, just stated that it's in the record, where is it in the record? Where is it?
Well, he can get the records for you, Mr. Derubis can get you the record.
Well, I've attended.
Whatever the records of the minutes meetings were, are available to you, if you go down there to the town hall.
Become part of the record now?
What?
Won't this become part of the record now, this letter?
And this is part of the record. This letter's part of the record.
Which letter is that?
The letter from Mr. Tramarko.
But that's irrelevant.
Why is it irrelevant?
Because it's the board's responsibility, not Mr. Tramarko's responsibility.
That's what we're going to do, we're going to act on that letter tonight.
To provide a record of evidence, where is your record of evidence?
We've got the record of evidence there, in the minutes.
You're using his letter.
What?
You're ignoring the prosecution's case.
No, I'm not ignoring it. No.
This is not a criminal proceeding. Mr. Attorney, can I have your opinion, please, on this?
Listen, sir, I'm going to ask you in a minute to clean up and remove.
I understand.
You understand? Because we have a lot of, a big meeting to go here tonight.
I understand.
And we're not going to get into a, a legal debate with you, because we're not going to handle that. We're going to handle the application that we got before us tonight, and if you have any problem with that, you have a right to go anyplace you want to have it adjudicated.
Can I just ask from your.
No, I don't want you to any more questions.
I just wanted.
I said to you, no more questions.
I'm asking his opinion.
I'm ruling you out of order, we've had enough.
I'm glad.
I said, you're out of order, sir.
You know, this is a public place.
This is a public place, but I've ruled you out of order.
Mr. Tramarko had an opportunity to speak.
Listen.
I'm entitled to speak.
You've been speaking for longer than he did, and you spoke for, at length, at the last hearing.
I have a lot to say.
Yes, I know you did, and we listened to it all.
But you're not addressing the main issue here.
We don't have to address that issue, except there, and the application is before us, and that's what we're going to do. And I want you to step away from the mic, or I'm going to ask public safety to come to you and escort you out of the hall. I said, because I've given you more than five minutes, I've given you two hours and five minutes, okay?
I'm entitled to it.
No, you're not. You're entitled there to whatever there the chair wants to give you, and the chair has given you two hours and five minutes.
This was not a public hearing, sir.
Two hours and ten minutes.
This is not a public hearing tonight.
Well, then what, what is the sign?
This, this was not a public hearing tonight, this is on for a vote tonight.
There's a.
The chairman was gracious, excuse me, you've spoken for a long time, I haven't said a word, the chairman was gracious enough, in spite of all these VFW gentlemen who've served our country in the room tonight, you're taking up their time now, chairman has asked you to remove yourself from the podium, and there's a public safety officer standing right behind you, and I'd request that you do that now.
And how do you know I have a third mic in front of me?
I didn't say you didn't.
You implied that.
No, I didn't.
There's a sign posted on Mr. Hickey's property, it says, "Public hearing."
Yes.
I don't know what else we could say.
Absolutely, and I've given you, I said to you, I gave you five minutes, and now you've already been here 10 minutes, and you still don't have what you're looking for, and we're going to act on this application, and I ask you to step away from the mic, because we have other things to do.
All I'm asking is your mic.
I'm asking you to step away from the mic, sir. I'm asking you, please. I'm asking you to step away from the mic. Thank you. I thank you.
Ready?
All right, on the secret negative, a motion.
Well, nobody's read the resolutions, did planning read, you did? Okay. Okay.
We do have to add an additional condition into the.
That was on March 2nd, right?
Resolution of approval.
Correct?
There is an additional condition that needs to be read.
Which we spoke about tonight.
Right.
Okay. All right, I move that we adopt the secret negative declaration as read at the previous hearing.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. On the building, on the final plat, Catherine Estates, a motion.
I move that we adopt the resolution as previously read, with respect to the plat on Catherine Estates. In addition, I move that we add the following two conditions, number one, with respect to, okay, or M, excuse me, that there be a clear, unobstructed access to the, the new residence in the rear of the lot, to allow emergency vehicles or personnel to see the residents from the road. And, that the garage be moved five feet additionally to the east, away from the cemetery, in order to preserve the buffer between the property and the cemetery.
That's just the.
What's? N.
That's condition N is.
N.
Yeah.
But, but just, just so we can be clear, condition N, garage being moved is five feet from where it's shown on the current plan, not five feet from where the garage currently physically exists.
Right. Correct.
And what's going to be for approval, correct?
That's a motion?
Yes, I move that we approve the plat.
Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. On the zoning ordinance, dimensions, modifications.
I move that we adopt the modification of dimensions as delineated in the memo and read previously.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. On the performance bond.
Performance bond, Mr. Chairman, be it resolved that the chairman of the planning board be authorized to sign the performance bond estimate for the map of Catherine Estates, number 1127.1, in the amount of $23,365, establishing an inspection fee of $1,870, and a cash deposit of $1,000. Therefore, the amount of the performance bond to be posted with the town shall be $22,365.
I move that we adopt the resolution as read with respect to the performance bond on Catherine Estates.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So ordered.
Thank you. Okey dokey. Mr. Chairman, we'll now move on to part two of the agenda, item two, number 2011-04, Indian Head Family LLC. There is a aerial photograph and a zoning map attached to the back of your memorandum. The planning board will conduct a public hearing this evening, April 20th, 2011, to consider the above referenced petition for a change of zone from R6 Townhouse Dwelling to RMGA Garden Apartment District, in order to develop the subject property into 36 residential apartment units. The site is an undeveloped wooded three-point acre rectangular lot that fronts Indian Head Road. There is uneven terrain throughout the parcel, with some slopes in excess of 15 percent. The applicant is requesting a change of zone from R6 Townhouses, six units per acre, to RMGA Garden Apartments, to permit development of a 36-unit garden apartment rental and/or cooperative ownership complex. This is a request to amend the comprehensive plan. The subject site is a vacant wooded three-point acre rectangular lot fronting Indian Head Road. It was zoned for light industrial uses from 1955 until 2007, when it was rezoned to R6 pursuant to change of zone petition number 2005-04, but has not been developed under that zoning. It appears that most, the most recent previous use dates from the 1950s, and was for a small residence with small accessory buildings, which were demolished in 1989. To the immediate north is property zone LI, which contains a building used for office and warehouse space. Further north is property zone R6, containing townhouse condominium units known as Country Point. Directly east of the subject site, across Indian Head Road, property is zoned LI and contains a public storage facility and office building, with another office building under construction just to the north. Further east is R21, single-family residential, 21,780 square feet zoning, developed with single-family homes. Immediately south of the subject site is property zone LI, which contains a public ice skating arena. Further south in LI zoning are the offices of two businesses and vacant property. Across Old Northport Road are single-family homes in R21 zoning. To the west zoning is R6, developed as the westernmost section of the condominium complex located north of the site. Further west is property zone LI and used for a public golf driving range and a former landfill. As noted, the site has been the subject of a previous zone change to permit multifamily housing in the form of townhouse condominiums. The previous proposal would have required several variances, but the current proposal would require only one variance for development on environmentally sensitive lands, because of the steep slopes at some portions of the site. The petitioner decided not to build the condominium complex, opting instead to work on plans for the present proposal, an alternate approach that supports the development of a range of housing choice. The petitioner does, however, propose to develop the rental units and buildings with the same footprint as had been proposed for the townhouses. The current proposal is based on the concept that the development of small rental cooperative complexes with units in the range of 600 to 1,000 square feet might accomplish two objectives, to provide more affordable housing options for those whom the average single-family home is either unnecessary or too costly, and because the small size of the units would tend to keep the prices down, to ensure the continued affordability of those units without the need of a mechanism to oversee the affordability. The board should consider what housing types would be most appropriate for this site. The board will also want to consider how site conditions might affect the proposed development, and whether there are traffic concerns to be addressed. The board should consider how housing needs in the town might be met by this proposal, especially in contrast to development under the current zoning. As the property is currently zoned, 20 townhouse units could be developed on the site. Townhouse units would be owner-occupied, which may tend to contribute to a greater sense of community. Each unit would be larger, which would contribute to community stability, in that the units may meet the needs of families through more stages and transitions. There are affordability components built into the approval of the R6 zoning. The town has been considering how smaller units can help create a range of housing for those at the stages of family and work life in which a large unit is either not affordable or not necessary. Rental units fill a need for younger individuals and families, the elderly, and others who may not have the financial or other means to maintain homeownership. Smaller units will tend to have lower rentals, lower rents or cooperative costs. Further, smaller units are likely to have, on average, fewer residents, so parking demand will be decreased. Physical constraints exist on the site, steep slopes, such that the property sits about 15 feet above the roadway, and the deep narrow shape of the lot will impose constraints on the design. Any approval for development of this site should include conditions to assure that the driveway giving access onto Indian Head Road is graded to provide safe access and avoid congestion on Indian Head Road. The approval of the current zoning included a condition that a consideration of a bus turnout be part of the site plan review process. If the board recommends approval of this petition, a similar condition should be considered. The planning department recommends that this property be the subject of an onsite inspection by the board. The following response has been received from the Suffolk County Planning Commission. Pursuant to the requirements of Sections A14-14 to 23 of the Suffolk County Administrative Code, the above referenced application, which has been submitted to Suffolk County Planning Commission, is considered to be a matter for local determination, as there is no apparent significant countywide or intercommunity impact. A decision of local determination should not be construed as either an approval or disapproval. Mr. Chairman, this is the planning department's presentation for Indian Head Family LLC, number 2011-04.
Is there anyone here representing the applicant?
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Vincent Pizzuli, with offices at 90 Merrick Avenue, East Meadow, New York. Let the record reflect that I just handed up the affidavit of mailing and affidavit of posting for this hearing tonight. Mr. Donadio did an excellent job in comprising the history of the development on this site. I would like to add a few things to it, and perhaps answer any questions that the board may have. I'm going to fast forward a little bit, in the late 1990s, when this property was still zoned light industrial, a prior owner sought and received a special permit to conduct a public storage facility. That never came about, and in 2002, Indian Head Family, the current applicant before you, purchased the property, and within a year or so, developed plans for a catering facility at this location, which was a permitted use under the light industrial zoning at that time. Largely due to the unpopularity of that application, it was withdrawn, and our client, heeding the wishes of the community, focused on proposing residential uses for the property. We made an application in 2005 to change the zoning from light industrial to R6, for the purposes of developing the townhouse condominium units that Mr. Donadio was referring to. In 2007, that application was granted by the board. It was granted with a set of conditions, specific conditions, that regulated the size and scope of the development, and tended to make the units smaller and hopefully more affordable for first-time home buyers. As you know, our economy has turned upside down in the last two years, three years, the prospects and hopes of developing this thing with a successful residential development, residential condominium development, hasn't fared too well. Our client has had difficulty with similar ventures in other parts of the island, and we went back to the drawing board. And I want to add that Mr. Donadio referred to the fact that there were variances sought on this property, the Board of Zoning Appeals did, in fact, grant those variances for the condominium development, and we've, we've never proceeded to subdivision and site plan approval. We believe that this project will serve an underserved community in the town of Smithtown, those who either cannot afford or cannot obtain homeownership at this point in time. It is our, it is our projection and forecast that this project will provide an alternative range of housing for younger people and empty nesters who want to stay in the town of Smithtown, and no longer wish to own a home or cannot attain homeownership requirements. Mr. Donadio also pointed out to the board that we have taken the previously approved, the site plan that was approved in connection with the prior change of zone, and we have used that same footprint and layout to propose 36 rentals instead of the 20 condominium units. units. So, the same impacts that would result from development of this site if it were a condominium would be the same as if, under this proposal, and these, those impacts have been mitigated and will be mitigated. I should give you some information with regard to the proposed breakdown of the units. We're proposing twenty-eight one-bedroom units. Each unit would be seven hundred and fourteen square feet under this proposal. The plan calls for eight two-bedroom units, which would be nine hundred and thirty-five square foot each. The size of the one-bedroom apartments is consistent with the guidelines that were imposed on the condominium approval, which mandated that we provide thirteen or fourteen one-bedroom condominium units of a similar size. I believe the square footage was roughly equal. But obviously, in this proposal, we have more one-bedroom units and less two- and three-bedroom units, so we're able to get more units under the RMGA zoning. We believe the site is suitable for this type of development. If you look at the area and radius map, you'll see that the area transitions from single-family homes to the north of Ellen Place and Indian Head Family, and as you travel south, you go to R six, which is the Country Point development. Then you have the industrial building between us and Country Point, and then you have the light industrial uses further to the south. This is a good transitional use from, from single, from traditional single-family home to the light industrial zone. The board has any questions? Our, our site plan engineer is here, and we're happy to answer any questions.
I just have a question.
Let me just see if there's anybody in the audience first there that has any questions. Is there anybody here that has any questions there on this application? Nobody? Board members? Oh, excuse me. A gentleman in the back. Would you come up to the mic, please? Just give your name and your address, please.
Twenty Mantock Path, Kings Park, New York, in Country Point. I just want to know if these homes are going to be low-income, be subsidized by the government?
These will be market-rate rental apartment units. They will not be subsidized by the federal government or any other government.
We just need your name one more time, sir. She didn't get it.
Angelo Pernicone. P-E-R-N-I-C-O-N-E.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Board members?
Yes, a question. You have mentioned that there was a, that these are going to be a rental or cooperative. What are they going to be?
Correct.
What's your plan?
At this point, at this point, we're planning rental, but we've designed the units to be capable of being converted into a cooperative development.
So, there's been no, I guess, declaration made to the
Correct.
State regarding a co-op?
Correct.
So, these are going forward, you're saying, as rental units?
Correct.
And they're going to be based on what a fair market rent is, correct?
Correct.
And there's no Section eight involvement, no, no government
Correct.
Involvement with Section eight?
That's correct.
No application made?
Okay.
At some point, once it's, if it's approved and if it's built, if a decision is made to try to convert the rental units to a co-op, you'll deal with that at that time?
Correct. We would have to file, excuse me, we would have to
File.
File a declaration with the Attorney General. Yes.
For the gentleman that had the question before, this application is only, all we're going to act on tonight is whether it should be referred to the town board for the zoning. If there's any, if you have any questions at the town board, if it goes that way, you can go to the town board and put your questions again.
He's recommending an onsite.
The lady?
I have a question.
Would you come up here, please? Just give your name and address.
Futris Milosia, one oh eight Manitou Trail, in Country Point. When you had the plans for the other, for the homes, you had the waste set up and everything in the back. How is it still, how are you still going to do this? Is it still going to be in the same?
Yeah. The lady is asking if, if the site plan is still laying out the STP in the same dimension and configuration as previously, and the answer is yes. It's the same, it's the same sized plant, the same layout, the same buffers, same screening.
It's just a change of zoning is what he's planning, is what he's applying for now. Okay? Anybody else? Board members?
The chairman, I'd just like to add one thing about, Mr. Yellen asked about cooperatives and rentals. We had several discussions with the applicant. The, it's not going to be necessarily neither or proposition. Under New York state law now, there's much more flexibility with regard to cooperatives, and we just approved Kensington Garden, which is a partial cooperative and a partial rental. And what we are looking for and what we are estimating for the new multifamilies when we approach them, they will probably be a hybrid when they're finally built if the market turns around and allows for financing of these, because it becomes very attractive. So, we're leaving the option open at this particular time. But the problem from the developer's point of view is that for owner-occupied units right now, the market seems to be very tight with regard to financing, but we're hoping that loosens up and that may become a feature of this.
Yeah, nobody knows, but he's building what are going to be rental apartments now, and at some point in the future, if the market changes and they decide to try to do a co-op conversion, they'll do it at that time.
Yes, but it could be partial, doesn't have to be complete.
Your, the recommendation there is for an onsite. Can we reschedule that there so that he can expedite this if he wants there for an onsite and get it back onto the calendar?
We could have it ready for the next meeting, if you'd like.
You what?
If you want a recommendation.
Is that something that you'd?
We'd very much appreciate that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, let's have a motion for an onsite.
We could certainly all get out there by then.
Yep. Let's have a motion for an onsite.
In the matter of two thousand eleven dash zero four, Indian Head Family LLC, Kings Park, a move that we adjourn for an onsite inspection.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Vinnie, do you want to adjourn?
No, Mr. Chairman, we have two matters that are after the, for decision, after the King Cullen application, and the attorney has, considering the, might, there might be a lateness of an hour, has requested that we might consider this postponing those items to the next meeting, and I said we would consider that after this.
I don't have a problem with that.
No. Next meeting would be fine.
Any, any other comments from the board? All right?
That's two thousand and ten dash ten Martella and two thousand and ten dash oh nine RNF Management.
Thank you. So, I move that we adjourn Martella two oh one oh dash ten and RNF Management two oh one oh dash oh nine to the next scheduled meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. Okay.
That's going to be May fourth. May fourth, yeah. Okay, let's go. Mean event.
All right, Mr. Chairman, the next item on the agenda under Part Two, sorry, item number three, two thousand ten J zero two, King Cullen Grocery. Mr. Chairman, this application was brought before the board, May fifth of two thousand and ten, at which time it was adjourned for an onsite inspection. Since that public meeting, the applicant has contacted the planning department and has made revisions to their proposal, and we have some comments written in the memorandum at the end of the memorandum. I'd like to read them on the record if you would allow me to. On page three, item six, April twentieth, two thousand and eleven update. Following the hearing on May fifth, two thousand and ten, the petitioner and representatives of the neighboring Veterans of Foreign Wars Post met to discuss a potential land swap that would have eliminated or reduced the extent of the variances needed for approval of the petition. When it became apparent that an agreement between those parties could not be reached, the petitioner reworked the design after consultation with the planning department with the intent of minimizing effects on the neighboring residential properties. It appears that the resulting design will require a larger variance from the parking requirements, but will allow the retention of the existing residential structure on the property. This would eliminate the need to modify Condition Five of the nineteen eighty-four change-of-zone approval for the King Cullen site and would reduce the visual impacts on the residential neighbors. It is also in keeping with the town's interest in the retention of the supermarket in the St. James Hamlet. At this hearing, the petitioner will explain the proposed design revision and its anticipated impacts to the board.
Thank you, Mr. Donadio. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, again Vincent Pizzuli with offices at ninety Merrick Avenue, East Meadow, New York. Let the record reflect that I will be handling, handing in the affidavit of posting with I, I think many of you who were here for the, for the first hearing back in May, I believe, of two thousand and ten, if there's anyone on the board who wishes me to go back and, and, and cover some old ground, I'd be happy to do so. We're here tonight with a revised plan, seeking your recommendation to the town board. The application from, from the very beginning has sought to rezone three-eleven Washington Avenue, which is a single-family house adjoining the, the supermarket property on the south side of the building facing
Why don't you take the mic in your hand, Mr.?
Good idea. Thank you. We're seeking to rezone three-eleven Washington Avenue, which is the single-family residence located at the southwest corner of the property. The supermarket is
We can't see it here. This gentleman is pointing to something that we can't see.
Well, listen, can we turn this around? Can you come over here and
Sure.
Turn this around for him? Do you have an easel?
No.
No, we can't see.
Can you see that now, sir?
You move the podium and put it back where it was.
You know what we can do? I can use one here and, and explain, explain both.
How is that now? Can everybody see that now, that wants to?
We're going to have to move up there. Yeah, sure. We'll move it over here. It's not high enough. No, we're trying to check with the TV guy in the back. The guy in the back is trying. Is he all right? Yeah, that's good. That's good. Sorry, now we're blocking you, right?
Okay. You see now? Okay.
Okay, what, what we've done is we've put on display two site plans. The site plan that was proposed previously to tonight's hearing and the revised site plan that Mr. Donadio was referencing in his report to the board. The site plan that was previously presented with this change-of-zone application and was heard and discussed with this board last May, proposed additional on, off-street parking on the south side of the King Cullen supermarket. The applicant retained the firm of VHB to conduct a parking study analysis on this site to determine the sufficiency of the existing parking supply as well as the availability of municipal parking, and with, with the aim of reducing the amount of onsite parking for the express purpose of leaving the house where it's currently located. One of the conditions that were mentioned in the prior town board approval, change-of-zone approval in nineteen eighty-six, was an assurance or a commitment on behalf of the applicant at that time to maintain that house. So, we strove to do that, and we have conducted a parking study analysis that demonstrates that we don't need to pave the south side of this lot on Washington Avenue to, to have additional parking. So, the house, we are going to be true to the, to that condition of the original change-of-zone approval in nineteen eighty-six, and that single-family house will stay there, which is currently occupied by a schoolteacher, and it's, and it's, it's a very good situation. The, the, one of our neighbors who lived on the opposite side of that house on Washington Avenue had originally objected to any parking, further parking encroaching towards her home or having any driveways on Washington Avenue. That concern has been obviated completely. We will demonstrate the sufficiency of our parking to the Board of Zoning Appeals on a parking variance application if this board sees fit to recommend this application for further review by the town board. In addition to that benefit to that neighbor, not paving the south side of the, the, of the, of the supermarket property also allows us to obviously create the best possible natural buffer to the adjoining residences on, on, on Second Street. So, that's basically the only change that we're presenting here tonight is from, from the prior application. We've reduced the amount of onsite parking because we don't need it. The house will remain. It will serve both as a buffer and as a transitional use from the supermarket to the neighborhood. We think it's beneficial to all of the adjoining homeowners who, some of whom may be here and can speak for themselves. So, you know what? At this point in time, I'll put the mic down and, and ask the board for, for public comment.
Okay, thank you. Commander, would you, are you going to be the spokesman, hopefully, there for your group?
Yes, sir.
Okay, would you come to the mic and give your, and give your name and address, please?
Name of my, my home or the hotel?
Would, any address that you would like to give us here, just so we know who you are?
My name is Frank Tadaro. I'm the commander of post three ninety-five at four sixty Lake Avenue. In addition, I live at eighteen Fourth Avenue in Smithtown. Our objections that we had at the, oh, first, I would like to thank the town for their effort to reconcile any differences that we may have had with King Cullen. Our objections that we had at the time where they're building on the property line and it's still there, where they're adding egress from our property is still there. So, our objections that we had at the last time are still what we consider valid. Mr. DeRubias had said that they would change the, or add a new septic system because ours were going to be, which we don't know how old of the condition, is in their parking lot. I believe from what I see here, it's still going to be part of the parking field. And basically, our position has not changed, that we are going to maintain, we are going to return the, the property to us at the end of the lease contract, and we, we feel that the building that's going to be on our property line will devalue our property. It's, we, no, we, we won't be able to use our property, we'll be cut that much short, and our objections that we had are still, have not been corrected by, or addressed by King Cullen. Also, I'd like to make a statement that recently, there was an article in the Smithtown News where King Cullen says that they gave us ninety thousand dollars in improvements and a sixty thousand dollar donation, and they've agreed to add a elevator to the second floor of our building. None of that has come to fruition. That's what we were trying to negotiate. They said that it was beyond their budget and they did not, they dropped it. That's why they altered their plan. We, again, we've been a member of this community since nineteen thirty-seven. We're limited in the use of our property for the next twenty years because we're tied up in a lease with a group called St. James Associates. We, we leased to the St. James Association, Associates, the property for, I believe at the time, we're getting thirty-six cents a square foot per year, and at the end of the twenty years, we'll be getting another, we'll be getting forty-six cents a square foot per year. They want to increase the use of our property. We don't, we feel that we should be compensated more for than what we're getting. We have lost the use of our land for forty-five years. We'll honor the contract. We don't want to cause trouble. We do want King Cullen to stay and increase their property, but not at the expense of the VFW and our, our home. We consider this home hollowed ground, so to speak. I know you were talking about the cemetery. They want to keep that, you know, for, to, to be reverent to the people planted there. Well, that represents our comrades that passed on in the past wars. As I said, we've been here since nineteen thirty-seven. We've, we've enjoyed a very good relationship with the community. They support us. They support us as well as they can and we try to give back what they, what we can. And again, the majority of our property is tied up in a parking lot. We don't want to have, have them use our boundaries any more than we, we have already given and we don't want the building on our property line. They already took the northern property line with their building and we don't want to give up the western property line. I don't know what the setback is in Smithtown, but I don't think it's zero feet. Thank you.
You understand that, that we don't have anything to do with negotiations for, that's between you-
I understand.
And, and the-
I understand.
And the King Cullen Company.
Mr. Derubias pointed us-
And that's the reason Mr. Derubias tried to resolve it.
Right direction and we thank him for that.
We love, we, we love, but we can't. We have to just take the application. It's going to be an amendment to the, to the zoning there. It'll go before the planning board, I mean, the town board to be approved or adopt, approved, all right?
Well, like, as I said, by them crowding us out on our western and northern boundary and using our southern property line as a mean of egress to their property, they're adding to the use that it wasn't intended when we entered into this contract 20, 25 years ago.
This, the addition on, on this building, right, is that on any property? There's a conflict there for?
No, it's, what they're objecting to is that the building is right on their property line. That's what they're-
It's going to be, it's going to be on their property. I got you.
Okay.
The proposed addition is on their property line?
The proposed addition will be on our western property line.
It's up to their property line, yes.
And the building that exists now is on our northern property line. And their additional parking spaces that they want to put to the south of us will have to cross, will have to grant them extra e, egress is the proper word? To get onto their property.
That egress there, that, the, the southern egress there from the parking lot is on your lease, is that correct?
No, sir.
No?
Our lease with, is with St. James Associates, not King Cullen. Our lease says that we will grant them egress to the, to Lake Avenue and that's it.
Okay.
That egress is there now though, right?
I'm sorry?
Isn't that, that egress is there now?
Yes, it is. That's, that's, that's the exit from King Cullen.
So that when your lease runs out, that's what you're concerned about there of how you're going to handle it at that time, is that correct?
When the lease runs out, our members expressed a desire to get the property back in the condition that it was in 1985 when the lease was signed.
Okay. But the, but the addition on the building is part of the application there for the, the zone amendment, is that correct?
It's on a separate piece of property. It's on the property that is owned by King Cullen.
Owned by King Cullen?
That's correct.
Yes, okay.
But the question about the egress, you're concerned that by the way they're doing it, it's going to create more traffic in the egress area? Is that the concern?
Not, not the egress that we have with St. James Associates. The egress that they will be creating by putting additional parking lots on their prop, parking spaces on their property.
By having more, I just want to make sure I have your position correct. By putting more parking spots on their property, they're going to create more traffic in the egress area?
Yes, not, not, not the egress area on Lake Avenue. It'll be the egress that they will be creating on our southern boundary, our southern perimeter, perimeter, excuse me, property line.
But the, the applicant there is claiming that the addition to the building should increase there the, the amount of parking that is necessary for people to use it, but that's a question there of to be answered down the road.
What, what he's claiming is that it won't, it won't be necessary, but what he's showing on his application is that he's going to be adding approximately 10 parking spots on his property. He owns the property from alongside the building on the south, to the south of us.
Correct.
And he's going to be adding approximately 10 parking spots, I believe.
No.
And to get to those 10 parking spots, he'll be using-
I got you.
An extra, an extra egress than the-
Those 10 parking spots don't exist now, is that correct?
That's correct. If you look at the aerial photograph, that's in the back of your memo, it's going to be kind of hard to see, but you, you should be able to pick it up. You see where the red area is? That's where the building is going to be built. That's the approx, the approximate location of the new structure.
I see.
In front of that, you will see the line, which is the front of King Cullen. And in that area, there is a green area with, looks like lawn area, which if you examine the plans, that's also attached to your proposal. The commander is correct. There's about 10 more parking spaces being added onto this design.
That, those 10 spaces are his property, that's King Cullen's property now?
No, that's not King Cullen's. That's the-
That's part of that lease?
It's part of the lease.
Well, I'm not sure if it is, that's a legal question.
The parking space that are along the southern now are on our property and part of the lease. By him moving them south, approximately 20 feet or so, he'll be moving the parking lot, parking spaces to his property and therefore using our property as egress and ingress to the property.
The, if you look at the, we're talking two different things, Commander. He is building 10 more parking spaces than what he currently has there right now, but all-
No, sir, he's moving parking spaces to his property.
That's correct. But it's all on your property that he's reconstructing them.
No, sir, they're on his prop, they'll be moved onto his property.
No, there's, if you look at the design, there's no new parking, we've eliminated any construction-
Sir, if I may walk up to the-
Sure.
Frank, Frank, I have a question. We're not talking about any encroachment, are we, of parking?
This property here.
This is our southern property line, right here.
Yes.
He's moving these parking spots to here. These are remaining, these are going to be on our lease. These will be on our lease.
Right here.
These will be on his property.
That's correct.
This is the point of the egress that I'm referring to.
Yes. What he's talking about-
Is this right here? Is that correct? These are the parking lots, parking field or the parking spaces?
These are the ones that he's moving. Here is our property line right here.
Uh huh.
What is confusing is that King Cullen also owns this parcel right here. The 25-foot-
Behind, south of their building. South of your property. I got you. Okay.
Sorry. I'm sorry. And he's concerned with these parking-
That's what, yes.
And this parking.
I got you, okay. Okay.
So they have to drive across your property to get to the new parking spaces?
That is correct.
That's your concern, right?
That is correct. And our original contract with St. James Associates, that's, this is an added point of entry.
I got you. I got what you're saying now.
Thank you.
Okay, now, is there anybody else that wants to add anything to what he said? Okay, how many people? Okay. Just take your time now and we'll go from left to right and come up to the mic, give your name and address and what you have to say. And try not to repeat what he's already said, okay?
Sir.
Left to right.
Uh, John, Mr. Gee, can I bring the microphone to this man?
We can't catch you on TV.
Oh, okay.
I thought you listened yourself as a bosom mate.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is all being videotaped and if you notice, there are cameras in the room and they're keyed onto certain spots. We don't have any ability to get into the audience.
Thank you.
It's not a mobile camera that can pan around. It's going to be on one spot or the other.
Okay. You can take that mic in your hand if you would like, okay.
Evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. As the commander alluded a few moments ago, the Smithtown newspaper released, was provided by a representative of the King Cullen Grocery Company Incorporated and it contained big-dollar amounts waiting for the St. James Veterans of Farm Wars Post 395 to agree that King Cullen works on water. We got a little better now. If the editor had spoken to the post commander, he would have been advised of the great rentin' dollars, whoops, pennies that the post receives from a landlord, the St. James Associates. The editor could have printed that 1985, the rent paid per square foot per year was 21 pennies and some mils. In the year 2011, that's now, we received 35 pennies and some mils and starting in the year 2026, 46 pennies and mils per square foot per year until the end of a 45-year agreement in year 2030. Current rate of rental property can land is $4 per square foot. The St. James Associate landlord also paid to fix a leak in a post roof in 1985. In the past year, three lawyers have requested the associates to increase the rent per square foot and reply was the same. The agreement was made in good faith by both parties and stands as is. The agreement contains 16 covenants and also words like ingress and egress for persons and vehicles shall be from Lake Avenue. The agreement was amended on the 23rd day of June 1985 as agreed to permit the St. James Associates, the tenants, to lease the property to King Cullen Grocery Company Incorporated. The agreement against states the property will be used and occupied solely for off-street parking of vehicles, ingress and egress from Lake Avenue. The fourth covenant permits the landlord, the VFW, in the ninth month of the last year, and that's 2030, the place of notice on the premise to let, to let, he says to let or for sale. Now, the eighth covenant, this instrument may not be changed, modified, or discharged orally. The twelfth says no variation of this lease shall be valid unless in writing and signed by the parties to be changed. The thirteenth is also distinct as the twelfth. The sixteenth, it is mutually agreed and understood that the covenants and agreements contained shall be binding upon both parties, the landlord, which is the VFW, and the tenant, which is the St. James Associates, and they signed that on the 18th day of April 1985. This agreement does not permit the property owners on the south side or the west side of the Veterans of Farm Wars property lines to trespass onto their property leased by the St. James Associates. That said, the property obtained by King Cullen Groceries Incorporated is landlocked from the Veterans of Farm Wars property as outlined on Schedule A of the agreement with the St. James Associates. They have no authority on their new property to cross over onto our property. If anybody has a question, I'll be happy to answer it.
All right.
We need your name.
What I need to, what I need to explain there to all of the members here, we don't, we can't get involved in any of the contract between whatever the, you leased to, to Kid, to King Cullen. We can't, it's impossible for us there to even, I, I hear you, but there's nothing that we can do about it. The only thing that we can do is one of two things. Either refer this to the town board for consideration for a zoning variance that they're going to need or not refer it, okay? So whatever the, the discussion is between King Cullen and you people there as far as compensation, we can't, we can't enter into that, okay?
That's fine.
We need the gentleman's name. I just need your name.
James Leftport Jr.
Okay.
Six Dogwood Drive, Smithtown, New York.
Okay.
Sir, our objection is-
That, that is fine.
We cannot renegotiate the lease. Our objection is that if you allow them to use it by default, we-
Well, we're not, we're not going to make that decision. This decision, this decision is going to go to the town board to make a decision, okay? Not us. All we can do is refer this to the town board to be considered and they don't have to give it, but that's the, that's the mechanism that it has to be done, okay?
All right, let me read the agreement again to you, sir, if I may.
The agreement does not permit, all right, I'll concede to my fellow task commander.
Okay.
Mike Eggle.
All right. Right, that one here. If you could stay away from the financial issues and just stick there to what you feel.
I'm going to speak to the financial issue. My name is Michael Jaeger. I live at 379 Mauritius Road, St. James, New York. We have failed to get across one point that you do understand and we do, but we have not communicated it to you. The reason for our speaking to the financial details is we understand that this is not for you to get involved in. We're just trying to communicate that. We are a not-for-profit corporation. I am a certified public accountant in addition to being a member here. I do the tax return for the post. I am not an expert in that area, but I do understand that we, this is not a private club and we cannot give away assets of this enterprise. And that means we also cannot cut a lousy deal without being perhaps subject to sanctions ourselves. We did try, we have, believe we have a fiduciary responsibility to negotiate with people who come and we did negotiate. The negotiations went nowhere. We wish to make it clear, perfectly clear, that we are not entering into any deal with King Cullen and that we are letting this deal run its course and it's going to expire. And when it does, they're going to lose that driveway, they're going to lose anything that's on our property and they're going to lose what they're trying to add on the southern end. That's the point you wish to get across, that that property is ours. They have use for it right now and that's it.
Okay. Thank you. Now, who else would like to speak on this? Yes, yes, you come up over here to the microphone and give your name and address, please.
Rose Palzolo. I live at the Fairfield Condos and I'm a senior citizen, as you know. And I had the bad experience of being hit by a car because of the parking situation where handicapped is parking near Railroad Avenue. I parked my car in handicap, started walking towards the store and got, I was facing the VFW and the man came behind me and he hit me. And I was lucky that he was going like five miles an hour. So I did write a letter to King Cullen's, a copy to Supervisor Vecchio, a copy to Mr. Derubias and asked that those handicapped parking spots not be there because they're too close to Railroad Avenue. Not only that they're bad for senior citizens to park their handicap, but also anybody in the community. So I'd like those spot, parking spots removed. There are three of them and they are dangerous. That's why I'm talking about it.
Mr. Chairman, if I could respond to that. Uh, Palzolo, we-
Did get your letter and-
I know you did and I was happy with the answers I got.
And we are changing, when the, if this application gets approved, we are changing the parking lot to move the, the handicapped parking spaces to the front of the building away from that location.
Yeah, but it's no good for anybody. You know, it, it, anybody could get hit. You don't have to be a handicap person to get hit.
I understand, but for, for, at least from a handicap point of view, we're going to move the handicap spots to a better location.
Right, but they should use it for flowers.
Okay, okay.
Thank you. Gentleman up in the back here, yes. Give your name and address, please.
Bob Kuebler, 254 Grant Avenue, St. James.
Hi, Bob Kuebler, 254 Grant Avenue, St. James. I'll try to make this short. I've been a resident when Blue Jay was on the street. I was there when they built the first store. I was there when they added Suffolk End. I was there when they took over, built the bakery on the other end. One of my concerns is the deliveries on the street, which is actually where they occur. They occur alongside on Railroad Avenue. They occur over in the parking lot to the train station, which has just been paved. Also, there's a restriction on Railroad Avenue, two and a half tons. The trucks still go down there, the tractor and trailers, the heavy bread trucks to get to 25A or, you know, over to Woodlawn Avenue. And it's been that way for a long time. I walk my dogs. I have to actually peek out behind the trucks and now there's only room for one car to come down railroad and I'm endangering myself. But my concern is that there's this truck traffic and I know the residents on Washington there, it's got to be terrible for them with the trucks that do turn around on that street. There's-
It's, you know, also a big problem. My opinion is, there's a lot of senior citizens in St. James. It's a local community, it's a local store. People go there for things they need because it's convenient. It's a smaller store, okay? I know everything is big now, everybody wants super large, but that store on a Saturday, as it is, the parking lot's full of community people. My question is, and I know this is a zoning meeting, I missed, you know, the other meeting, I did catch it on public TV, but my question is, is this for the good of the community what's being done here, or is it for the good of King Cullen in Chicago, somebody sitting there looking at or expecting more profits? And as I said, Saturday, the parking lot is full, and not to take, you know, parking spaces away, it's insufficient now, and the delivery area is ridiculous. There is really no room for a delivery area, but, you know, I know, you know, they want to add on. I can't see it's necessary. I don't know if a lot of the other residents do, but that's my feeling.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The lady in the back, that was sitting behind this gentleman, okay?
Elizabeth Lauber, L-A-U-B-I-S-M-B-Y-E-R, 159 Third Street, Lot 49. I know that. I just want to keep this short. I sent in a letter in the past week, Mr. Chairperson and Planning Department, about my concerns about what the changes were. I don't really have any concerns because I'm actually glad that what was going to happen before with the additional spots coming towards my house is not happening, so I'm happy about that, because I had mentioned in the letter that at two o'clock in the morning, I hear radios fifty feet behind me. Now I won't have them encroaching in my yard. I do want to bring up one note that I did put in the letter, and I do want to make sure, because in the last, the May fifth meeting in 2010, I did submit a list of plantings that were, that would thrive, and I hope that that will really be done because of two reasons. One is for privacy, and one was for cleanliness for the town, because I noticed in the town of Smithtown the last ten years, the town is sprucing itself up and asking storekeepers to make the town original and clean and fresh and neat, and that's important. I do want, I do want to point out that that section behind me, which is that plot of land before the VFW, has been used for good and bad. Like, kids gather there at two o'clock in the morning and stuff like that, and with the recent snow that was built up to twenty-four feet, I had kids jumping from the snow into my yard. We're not going to talk about that. Okay? Also, it's been used for bad as dumping ground for children's mattresses, larger couches and chairs, and non-refundable bottles from the store. They don't know where to throw them out. But the good use is, and it's a nice use, it's used, that land is used for a family gathering for the VFW, sometimes twice a year, Memorial Day, they set up for the barbecue, and I love that, and it's nice. The one thing that I ask is that those plantings are put there, and I love the party, I love to hear the family that come and enjoy, but the kids are climbing the old trees that are there, and they're saying, "Hello, lady." And I'm like, you know, I really want, I like the place cleaned up, I like to make sure that there will be a fence on your side, as mine does, and the plantings will be correct. And I'd also like to say a personal note that I'm so glad that 311 Washington Avenue will remain as a residence for a while, because I knew the woman that built that house, and she wanted that house to thrive as someone to live in with love. I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. Anything that, you know, anything that's been said at the other meeting, if we refer this to the, to the town for their concern, everything that's been said in the past will be for the town to review at the town board level, okay? The lady here, yes, is coming up to the mic, and then I'll get over to this side of the
Good evening. Lori Beth Davies, Tromontana. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I spoke at the last meeting on May fifth. I am still against the zone change to commercial. I think it's wonderful that they're going to keep 311, but that's only now. Once it's changed to commercial, they're changing the character of St. James one plot at a time. What was it, 1985 was the first one, 2011? I grew up, the first twenty-two years of my life in St. James, I love it, moved back five years ago, bought a cute little house, had a cute little house across the street. Now we're going to have, be looking at King Cullen. My property values are going to be cut right in half. I would like to keep it, the quaint little town that it is, by extending it to make it a super King Cullen. Granted, right now, we're just talking about an added grocery section. For, you know, we're starting groceries, and the next thing you know, we're, you know, selling all kinds of other stuff. But that, that's my concern. I want to keep St. James, the small town that it is, the town that I love. Thank you.
Thank you. The gentleman over here, thank you. Your name and address, please.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Dominic Urkelano. I'm past commander and present quartermaster of post 395, St. James. First, I would like to say I live in Neshkanset, but I adopted St. James as my town because I was attracted to it. I am an eighty-six-year-old guy going back to World War II. I had formed a picture in my mind as to what a small town should be like and how a small town functions, a kind of Norman Rockwell-type town, you know, the kind of town you thought about while in the service and wanted to come home to. A town with a generous assortment of small businesses, such as the barber shops, the shoe repair shop of old, mixed in with businesses such as restaurants, a bakery, a 7-Eleven, and yes, the town supermarket. Just big enough to handle the needs of a small town. But alas, as has happened down through the years, the town has grown and our needs have grown with it. It's understandable that supermarket known as King Cullen wishes to enlarge itself to accommodate the town's needs. And yes, did I mention that we are veterans of foreign wars? You know, the guys that parade every Veterans' Day and Memorial Day and even St. Patrick's Day, along with our comrades from the American Legion and the AMVETS and the Marines? As the town's needs have grown, so has the needs of the veterans organizations. Of what value is a small town without the veterans organizations? But we've grown older. We're not as limber as we once were. We need help, too. That's why when we were approached by the King Cullen representatives, we were eager to accommodate them and thought we had a deal. But alas, the King Cullen representative was either fired or was transferred, and the deal fell through. And gentlemen, this is where we're at. It was mentioned at a previous board meeting, which I did not attend, but then managed to see repeatedly on TV, that no deal would transpire unless all parties involved would be happy with it, with the, with the board's recommendations. I think the chairman made that statement, and we would hope that the board would stand by it, because gentlemen and ladies, we, the veterans, are not happy. And as a postscript, I think King Cullen should rethink their position and not be so short-sighted. Twenty years from now, they'll look back and say either, "Boy, we did the right thing. We held this town together," and be proud, or "We should have, we could have, but we didn't." I thank you very much, Mr.?
You're very welcome, sir. Anybody else? The gentleman sitting behind the commander here.
My name is Ira Schwartz. I live at 7 Lehigh Drive, Smithtown, New York. Looking at the site plan, I see that if you grant this change of zoning, the northwest quadrant of the VFW property becomes valueless. Nothing can be built anywhere near it. You'll be taking their property. You shouldn't grant this change of zoning. You'll be taking something that doesn't belong to you. Thank you.
You understand now that whatever we do, we're not the ones that are going to make the decision, okay? The best that we can do is, is if we decide to refer it to the town board, everything that you've said here tonight will be on the record, and you could, you're perfectly welcome to go to the town board and restate anything you want to restate, okay? Yes, sir?
We are not inherently opposing their expansion. We're opposing their encroachment on our property and on our heritage and our legacy to future veterans in the St. James area. We feel that by them taking the northwest quadrant of our property, again, it will devalue, we won't be able to expand, and our purpose is to help veterans, we won't be able to utilize the property properly. We have three Boy Scout troops that meet at our, that we sponsor, they meet at our post, but they're, we're limited to what we can do for them. Hopefully, in fifteen years, we can build a scout house or something back there where they could use, where we could expand our service to the community and just do what's right for the community and for our, our veterans in the future. And we feel that by them encroaching, which is, which is a good word, we won't be able to do that when we get the property back in twenty years. Thank you.
You say "approaching" because they're going to be building so close to your property line?
They'll be building on the property line, yes, sir.
Thank you there. You know, we all appreciate what you do for the community, okay? Everybody knows what veterans do for the community, so that it's not a question of not trying there to recognize that, it's a question there of property rights that people have and that you're interested, and maybe they can be married together someplace down the road here, okay?
Property rights of the VFW, if you take it and you grant change of zoning, the way that picture, we could fix it.
And just so we, again, I think the chairman hit on it, just so we could be clear. We don't grant the change of zoning. We, it's before us. We give a recommendation as to whether or not, from a planning perspective, the change of zoning should be done. Only the town board, the town council, can change the zoning on a piece of property. So it's a several-step process.
You may recommend it, but we're telling you, if you recommend it, what you're saying from the town board is you're allowed to take the VFW property and reduce values, and that's what we're objecting to.
No, no, no. All we're doing is recommending for them to consider the application. They're the ones that are going to make the decision, not us. We're not going to decide on this application there, except to recommend, if we do that, to the town board for them to consider it. Everything that you've said here tonight, everything, is recorded, and everything's been said before is recorded, and they, the town board will hear, will be able there to review all of that. And you'll be able to go to the meeting if that's the event, okay? The gentleman in the back.
So if you do not recommend it, it will not go to the town board, correct?
Yes, but the. Oh, it does go. It goes, yes. Yes. We have a recommendation, and Mr. Derubias can correct me if I'm wrong, as to whether, from a planning perspective, this should or shouldn't be granted. But if we say it's, on our opinion, it shouldn't be granted, the town board can still grant it. And if we say we think it should be granted, the town board could still deny it. Am I correct?
Yes.
This doesn't, this doesn't mean that the town board has to approve anything that we recommend to them. It means that they're going to consider everything that's been said here tonight and at the other meetings, and they're going to then make a decision what, which way they want, which way they think this should go, okay?
I'd like to reiterate my statement that the property that King Cullen now owns is landlocked from our property. They have no right to cross from their property onto our property.
All, look, everything that you've said is true, but the gentleman says that there's a lease that exists that goes for another twenty years or something, and at the end of that lease, then you can exercise there some control over your property that you didn't have, that you don't have now today. But right now, there's a lease that's in existence, okay?
No, there's no lease for them to cross the property line.
No, no, I didn't say they were gonna, I didn't say they're going to cross the property line. I said they have a lease for certain rights that you gave, that not you, but the people that own the property gave that are involved there in the, in the parking part and the ingress and egress, so, right?
That was granted by previous members of the.
I know, I know.
To St. James Associates, not to King Cullen.
Yes, I know.
And may I ask a question on that note? Walter Wood, 213 Lake Avenue, St. James. With that lease.
Yes.
I can promise you, I can guarantee you, that lease will not be renewed in twenty years. What, my question is, what will happen to the expansion of King Cullen's building back, I guess it was about twenty years ago? With the loss of that lease, they needed that lease to make those improvements. That lease will no longer be there in twenty years.
Okay.
What, can I ask what, what will happen?
I agree that, I understand what you're saying, sir. All of these issues are monetary issues that we don't have any control over. They are issues that are between King Cullen and whoever there made that lease, and we don't have anything to do with that. All we have to do with is planning.
I think you missed my question. My question was, what is the protocol when a lease runs out on a, for a property that that lease is needed to expand, okay? And then the lease runs out. Is that expansion now null and void? Does it have to be removed?
Listen, I don't know anything about the leases or how, who they were with or anything else. All I know, all I know is that the application that's before us is something for an expansion to a building, and whatever the other factors are, we don't have any control over.
Okay, maybe I might be able to ask Mr. Derubias or Mr. Schull, what is the legal protocol when a lease runs out on the situation like we have here? I'm not worried about the lease itself. What happens when a lease runs out and that lease was required for an improvement or an expansion?
Okay. I understand your question. Essentially, what's going to happen is the applicant is, we're going to take care of this during the site plan process, but the applicant has to file a covenant on the property, at which time is when the lease expires, they have to retire X amount of space that's equal to the lost parking spaces. What I suspect is going to happen is twenty years from now or whatever, you're going to have a much better rate on that parking than you do today, because they're going to need it to keep the store open.
I was going to say, it puts them in a different, maybe a better position, but that's twenty years down the road, and that's for those parties.
Yes.
But that's what I was thinking, the same thing.
I'd agree that everything that you're saying has got a financial factor to it, but that doesn't, that's not.
I'm not worried about financial.
Okay? Well, it is, because if they, if the lease is not, if the lease is not renewed, that means that that, they're going to be affected financially. Is that correct?
Yes, now, Mr.
All right, but we don't have anything to do with that.
Your question, that that portion of the expansion is going to have to be retired.
Okay.
That's the answer.
But that's some, that's twenty years down the road. Yes, sir?
I have a question they're trying to ask. If in twenty years this is terminated.
You mean the lease?
The lease.
Yes.
How will that affect your recommendation to the town board now, knowing that this is only going to be a temporary amendment?
It's got nothing to do with, it's got nothing to do with the recommendation, because what ha, what will happen is that company will have to satisfy somehow the requirements there for the substitution of the property that they're using now, and you know that that's not going to be easy. Frank was going to answer his question.
That's fine, okay, thank you.
Frank, you want to answer something?
Frank, you wanna answer something, or?
No, I, I, the chairman answered the question, basically. What we're dealing with here is a zoning question. What is basically going to be, happen is, at the site plan process, is when all of these issues, these are the mechanical issues that the applicant is going to have to deal with. And we, this is not the first parcel that we've had lease parking arrangements, and we had actually a restaurant in St. James close because they lost their lease on the parking. So, it, it does happen, and those are the risks that people have to take.
The gentleman in the back, and this hopefully is the last person, all right?
Robert Tetra, 113 Sisters Road, St. James. I just wanted, T-E-T-R-A-U-L-T. I just wanna make sure that you're clear on what you're talking about as far as the egress and whatnot. King Cullen owns the property to our south, which runs back parallel to our property behind the post. Now, when they move those parking places all the way over to the south side, they have to cross a piece of our property that is not in the lease, okay? That is not in that lease with King Cullen. So, they will be transgressing our property to get to those parking spaces. That's the point that everybody was trying to make, and I don't know that it was clear before. But the property that they will have to cross in order to get to those new parking places, we own, and it is not in the lease. Thank you.
So, you're saying that they'll be driving, people will have to be going over your property, property that's not covered by the existing lease?
That's correct.
All right. Now, let's see if we can get an answer for that. Mr. Pizzuli, can you give us an answer to that or not?
I will, if it's time to wrap up the hearing. I'm gonna reserve all my comments for, for the conclusion of the hearing.
You wanna make sure if anybody else has any other comments, and you'll address them all at once?
Correct.
Okay, that's a good idea.
Okay? You'll get an answer to that, okay? Anybody else? Thank you.
Where are we going now?
What? That's what we're gonna, that's what we're gonna do right now. We're gonna, I'm gonna address the board now for their opinion, okay?
Do you want to have him comment first?
Who was that?
I think the Pizzuli wanted to wait till all the comments were in.
Oh, you wanna wait till, oh, I thought you were gonna wait for the next meeting or what?
No.
No? All right. Come on up to the microphone.
I have one, one aspect of this, just wanted to add here. It's just, I'm a little confused and perhaps I'll be cleared up about this.
My name is Richard E. Smith. I live at One Hope Place, St. James, New York. And I've walked through this parking lot for 40 years, several times a week. And my concern is those, the 10 spots, the proposed spots. The, the rear entrance to the VFW centers down into a dead-ended situation of parking. Now, those, how will these spots be accessed? Will they be accessed through what now is, in essence, a, a dead corner? I'm not sure of this, but I have not really looked at this plan.
First off, we ask, we answer these questions during the site plan process. That's not, some change here is whether or not we're gonna change physically the zoning from residential. So, we can't really hear you.
Try this one. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. A telephone, yeah, Verizon. Okay. Sorry about that. What basically is before the board right now is a zoning question, whether we go from residential to central business. That's what the board is reviewing. The site plan is illustrative of what the applicant wants to do, but it's not concrete. It's going to change probably more when we get down to the site plan process. And what you're bringing up, for example, is one of the things that the building department's going to wanna take a look at, and I've been asked about fire exits and other things. We don't do that at the zone change hearing, but we do do, look at those things at the site plan process. And if the access is impeded on the back of the building or hindered, or the fire marshal determines that they want something different, the design will change. So, this is only conceptual. We're looking at this. Certainly raise the objections, and we'll get the building official to address that. And we normally, as the chairman points out, we give this hearing not only to the town board, but to other agencies as well. So, they'll take a look at these things. But don't look at this as hard fact. What is finally gonna be built is gonna look similar, but it's gonna be different.
The piece of property that they want to build into is currently zoned residential. In order for them to build into it, they have to change the zoning or get the zoning changed to, is it central business, to allow that type of building. That's the only thing we're gonna be concerned with here is, is our recommendation as to whether or not the zoning classification on that piece of property be changed. That's what our, our role in the process is.
What is your recommendation as of now?
We, we haven't made a recommendation yet.
You haven't made a recommendation yet.
I don't think, I'm not sure if we're gonna make one this evening either. We're gonna discuss that when everybody's done talking.
Mr. Pizzuli, do you wanna answer?
Hold up. They're, I think they're running out of, of tape.
We have to do some, a timeout here for the tape. They have to change the tape up in the